Well, good afternoon and welcome to January 3rd, 2023, meeting of the Rowan County Commissioners. It is an honor to see you guys here with us today. We're glad that you're here. We hope that at the end of the meeting, you feel like you've got something positive out of it. So it's the tradition of this board. We do a few things before we get going. We're gonna have our chaplain come forward, Chaplain Taylor, and he's gonna provide for the commissioners what's called a solemnizing prayer. A solemnizing prayer isn't for you. It's for us because we place great value in wisdom. We think that wisdom is a good thing. So we take very seriously the decisions that we're making here tonight and always. And Chaplain Taylor's gonna come up and pray for some of that wisdom for us. Following that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners, Lord, we come to you this day and we thank for County Commissioners, your Lord. We thank you, Lord, that you've given us another year, your Lord. Thanks for bringing us through this past year, Lord, and I can be with the County Commissioners, all the meetings they've been through and all the work that they did this past year. We look forward to the work they do this year in 2023. Give them your blessing, give them the strength they need, Lord, give them the knowledge they need, your Lord. We pray and thank for the dedication that they have to do what they do, your Lord. Help them to stay in this meeting of the day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, y'all waiting on me?
Yeah.
Well, welcome to 2023. That's first thing I'd like to say is congratulations on making it to another year. Happy New Year, Rowan County. Happy New Year to our county employees and commissioners. Happy 2023. We're looking forward to a great year this year. A lot of things to look forward to. I would like to make a couple of hellos. We would like to welcome as our new clerk to the board, Sarah Pack. Sarah is new to us and she has a tremendous amount of experience as a board clerk. We are very fortunate to have been able to get her from a sort of a surrounding county. And so we look forward to your work with us here. And so, welcome, congratulations. Good to have you here. She's already hit the ground running, running hard. Also, Rebecca Saliba is here. And Rebecca is gonna be working here in the manager's office, but also with our board attorney. So it's welcome, Rebecca. It's good to have you here. And then, for the first time since he was sworn in, we'd like to welcome Travis Allen, our new sheriff. And congratulations. And we look forward to our work with you in the future, Sheriff. So, so, welcome. All right, let's get rolling. There's one addition that I'd like to make to the agenda. And it'll be item 6A. 6A, and it'll be a policy for banning of TikTok and other products from county-owned devices and network. That's been passed out to you. That'll be item 6A. I don't have anything else. Does anyone have any other additions or deletions? All right, if not, then do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
No move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we've got the minutes from our last meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then the consent agenda is before us. Motion to approve consent agenda as presented all the way to, from A to AC.
No move.
In a second? All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, public comment period. We have two, sign up for public comment. Mr. Lassiter, welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity. Am I too close, too far away?
No.
And a lot of you know me as Randy. I'm Raymond Lassiter. I'm here on behalf of the Rowan Museum, our Rowan Museum. And I'm not here to complain and I'm not here to ask for anything, unless you want to give us something. I am here to invite all of you to a reception this coming Sunday at the Rowan Museum for our newly-named executive director. We're starting a new era in Rowan Museum history and we would love to have you there. Anybody in the room, we'd love to have you there, two to four, this coming Sunday at the messenger room in the Rowan Museum. The young man is Evan Burleson. He has come here, he's been on staff for a while, and we're real excited. We want to get him off to a good start. So we want to issue that invitation because you've helped us so much through the years. We hope you'll continue to. All right.
Will period attire be required?
Go for it, go for it.
I won't make that mistake again.
That green suit is somewhere.
Yeah, it is.
He was in period attire several years ago.
Thank you, Randy.
All right, thank you, folks, for all you...
Thank you, Randy. Next up, Michael Chapman.
Happy New Year to everybody. Hope you ate your blackout peas and greens because we're gonna need a lot of greens if the board has any, a board of, school board has anything to do with it, for sure. I'm here because of the schools. And the question is, who's running them? Who's running our school system? It certainly can't be the school board because of things I see all the time. Central Office brought the proposal for computers. They said they want to refresh them. Well, that's a code word for purchase new ones. Why? That was my question. Nobody asked that question. They were using the word lease. I'm not sure if they know to understand the difference between leasing something and purchasing something. But it's a purchase. And the question again is, why? How will purchasing, this question wasn't asked. How will purchasing new computers improve the education of our students? But you guys have done a great job of bringing in new commerce and things like that. You've gotta bring in families too, which I'm sure you're trying to. You're drawing new business in, drawing new families. Why does a family want to come to this county when we're one of the bottom 10% of the education in the state? That's how bad it is. When only 19% of those children are grade level when they graduate. They can't do cursive writing. They can't do anything like that. Well, I sent you guys a six-minute audio. I hope some of you got it and listened to it. That was some of that meeting. The thing is, it's kind of almost like a comedy. You remember MASH? When Radar O'Reilly used to bring the papers in front of Colonel Blake and he just randomly signed them? Radar took them back and he'd say, what did I sign? Don't worry about it, it's good. That's kind of what the Central Office does all the time. I heard a rant from the board, Hunter. He sat down and said, three years ago, he wouldn't vote for this again. He asked them questions. They couldn't, they were all vaguely answered. Nothing specific. And you see these in some of the facts that I sent you. Yet, him, along with every one of the board members except for two, voted to push it forward to you guys to ask for $11.2 million. And even that, I can't comprehend these numbers on here. Again, it's smoke and mirrors. It's like no details about what. Why are they ordering so many more computers? Why are they ordering 500 new TVs? You know, it's crazy. We don't have 20,600 students and they say, we're buying them extra in case they break down. You know what? We have computers that we've paid for. You paid for them, I paid for them. They're paid for with one more payment. Why can't we take those out? Now, here's my proposal, real simple. Remove all the computers from kindergarten to grade five and bring books back. Let's teach them basic education. Keep some computers in there to teach them computer science. And that's it. Teach them. Use that extra money to bring in literacy teachers into these public schools, into primary. Bring two teachers in there. Let them teach literacy. Bring one to every high school. This in itself will save a lot of money and it will improve education. And that's the question that no one's asking on the school board. How will buying new computers get our educational numbers up? It ain't happening. It's not happening. I'm gonna ask you guys to vote against that and tell them to go back to the drawing board and come back with y'all with a realistic version of how they can use money, our money, to get and improve education. We've got to improve it in this county. It's horrible and it's not changing. And Central Office doesn't care about the board. They just do whatever they want. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. All right, we'll move to item number three. Valerie Steele is our Director of Airport and Transit. And we're gonna have a public hearing on fiscal year 24 combined capital transportation grant application. Valerie, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a repeat. We've had one hearing already, but numbers have changed, so it needs to come back in front of the board. Do this every time. There we go. North Carolina Public Transportation Division is accepting applications for FY24. As the VOC is the only official applicant for these funds, it needs to come back in front of you for approval. This public hearing is to allow any residents to have an opportunity to comment on our transportation needs and the programs that we use grant funding for, for RTS. Specifically, this is the combined capital. September 6th was our last hearing. We had some changes in vehicle orders. Our FY22 vehicles were canceled by the manufacturer. We are allowed to add them to our next vehicle order. So they will be included if you approve it for FY24. It's 11 vehicles at this time. We have a fleet of 26. 16 of them are over their useful life, which is 100,000 miles. Only seven vehicles are under that threshold. Everything we order moving forward is gonna be raised roof fans equipped with lifts. They work the best for our system and what we, the services we do, door-to-door transportation, mostly for persons with disabilities. And it's much easier to maneuver in the areas rural that we have to go.
Hey, can I ask you a question? Who determines useful life? I think probably everyone sitting up here has vehicles over 100,000 miles.
North Carolina DOT puts a stipulation on what they believe useful life for this type of vehicle is. And the number of times a lift would be used through that 100,000 miles is quite a bit as well.
So do they then determine, or do they dictate that over 100,000, they have to be replaced within a certain amount of time?
Over 100,000 miles, we can apply and they will tell us the number that they will support the grant funding to let us replace. So DOT says, we could have 16 eligible, but they'll give us funding for 11 in FY23. I'm sorry, 24, if we want to take that on with our local match. Luckily, the combined capital is quite a bit of grant funding. 90% is federal. So local, normally, we only do a 10% match because state will do a 10% match partially. So it splits it up more. We're asking for approval for the 212-575. That would be worst-case scenario if state doesn't give their local match portion to make sure we can order these 11 vehicles.
And if we, let's say there's a couple that are not funded, for whatever reason. I mean, does that happen? And then the vehicles that we say we have to replace, do we just keep running them?
We do.
So they're not gonna come pull the batteries out of them? They just, we keep using them?
We do keep using them. What typically happens is like the 11 that are going out of service become our property as in Rowan County. So we can utilize some of those in what I've called the boneyard. And that's how we've been actually functioning over the past two years, is taking components off the vehicles sitting up there. So taking the air conditioning, taking the alternator, taking pieces off that and putting them on to the vehicles that are over 100,000 miles. Getting 11 out of 16 will be pretty good for FY24. And then hopefully FY25, we will be able to replace the rest.
Are you familiar with a federal grant that? I'm assuming it's a federal grant. The city of Salisbury just got? Or transportation?
For microtransit?
Mm-hmm.
I have seen that. It's not something RTS is set up to do. So we don't do microtransit. So it's not a grant we would go for. We do the door-to-door at this point.
I know their transit would probably be limited to the municipality, but ours is not limited. We go throughout the county, don't we?
Yes, we service all. And then there's a difference between city and county transit and rural and urban. So all of it impacts which grants we're eligible for. And we do, every year, go for any grant we are eligible for.
And there's never any coordination of where all these vehicles are running?
There's all, the coordination...
Between the city and the county with these federal grants and...
There is, based on each person can qualify for different grants. So they may qualify for certain services under Rowan County and we will provide those. But they, if they live in certain areas of Salisbury, they would need to use Salisbury's transit for that. So it all depends on the location within the county, what they're qualified for money to be used for. And that dictates through NC DOT and FTA. It's not something we come up with. We have to follow their requirements. So we would evaluate the person. Sometimes it's income-based. Sometimes it's just the location that they live within the county.
And do we allow things like you picking them up, taking somebody to work? Or do they have to be a medical qualification to be able to use our transit?
So at this point in time, individuals are all medical transport. We're doing a lot of dialysis, door-to-door to doctor's appointments. The work component comes in where we do transport to Rowan vocational opportunities. One of the grant funding does allow for work transport and we utilize that for RVO at this point. But an individual can't just call us for a ride to work. So overall, we are requesting the 212-575 in case we cannot get the state to participate. Hopefully, it won't change. In the past, the state has always found that funding for us. But in order to not have to come in front of you again and ask for more, the 212 would be the amount we would need with the 90% federal to get all 11 vehicles that we were allowed for. So action item one, we're doing right now, conducting the public hearing for the updated amount. And action item two, if I could ask for approval for RTS to complete and submit the application under the new amounts presented today.
Is that it? Any other questions? All right, we will now open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 combined capital transport, transport grant application. If there's anyone that has anything to comment on this, please come forward. We'd love to hear from you. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the Rowan Transit System application for the combined capital grant?
No move.
In a second? All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Valerie. Anna, you're up. Oh, dude. Did I miss one? I'm sorry. Budget amendment, yeah, budget amendments provided. Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve these?
No move.
In a second, all in favor, say aye. Right now.
Yes, so now I will introduce Tanya Thompson from Martin Starnes. And she will go over our comprehensive annual report.
Thank you, Anna.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Do I advance this? Good evening. My name is Tanya Thompson. As Anna said, I'm an auditor with Martin Starnes and Associates. And I am the lead auditor for your fiscal year 2022 audit. And I'm here to present the results to you tonight. So I always like to start with the most important information, which is our opinion. You hire us to perform an audit for the specific purpose of providing an opinion on whether your annual financial statements are fairly presented. So we do have an unmodified or clean opinion on the county's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. I do want to thank Anna and Lisa and everyone in finance. Not just finance. We work with the Department of Social Services, the Health Department, Transit. We work with people all over the county. And their cooperation is what makes it possible for us to do our job and issue our opinion. I have some information for you, some highlights of your general fund. So you'll see in front of you the 2022 and 2021 revenues and expenditures of your general fund. You'll see a 6.9% increase in your revenues and a $6.9 million increase in your revenues and a $5 million increase in your expenditures. That does not include any other financing sources and uses, things like loan proceeds. That is strictly just revenues and expenses. So one way, and we'll talk more about your revenues and expenses in just a moment. But first, I want to talk a little bit about fund balance. This is one of the most important ways to measure the health of a local governmental unit. So fund balance is basically what you have left over after you count your assets and your liabilities. Your fund balance, if you look at your financial statements for your general fund fund balance or your general fund balance sheet, you'll see that fund balance is broken down into several categories. You have non-spendable, which is things like prepaid, things you can't turn into cash. Restricted means an outside party places a restriction on how you can use those funds. Committed and assigned are both levels that are board-imposed restrictions. Things like how you budgeted will affect those categories. And then unassigned means there are no internal or external restrictions on how you can use those funds. So this is just a snapshot of your total fund balance. You can see from 2020 to 2021, fund balance increased by about 18 million. And then from '21 to '22, it increased another 16 million. And I will say that the biggest reason that you've had such increases the past two years was very conservative spending just with the uncertainty in the COVID-19 pandemic and putting things on hold. And also some influxes of aid from the federal and state government, as well as increasing sales tax and things like that. So another way to look at fund balance is this concept of available fund balance. This is a statutory calculation that says, well, this is how much fund balance you have, but this is how much is actually available for you to carry over into the next fiscal year and spend how you want to spend it. And that calculation is your total fund balance, less you're non-spendable. You can't spend it, so it doesn't go into the available category. Unless this stabilization by state statute, which is a statutory calculation, it's mostly comprised of your accounts receivable, things that are assets, but they're not yet spendable at June 30. So if you didn't have it in hand, you can't appropriate it in the next budget year. So this important calculation of available fund balance is how the Local Government Commission monitors and evaluates local governments, as well as compare them to their peers. So you can see this calculation here shows you that total fund balance again and also, or shows you that fund balance available calculation that we just talked about. And then your net expenditures each of those years. And then the percentage there is the important number. So how much of your fund balance available would get you through your budget? And that's what this calculation is. So 2020, it was 23.6. Last year, it went up to 36.8. And in 2022, it went up to 42.4. So comparatively, the LGC has a recommended minimum for units of your size, or counties of your size specifically, of 16%. Now, the median of your peers, that's other counties who have more than $100 million in annual expenditures, is 32%. So we talked at a high level about your revenues. And I want to break it down just a little bit for you into your main revenue categories. This is only your general fund. So you can see your property taxes are at 54%. Your sales tax is at 22%. And your restricted intergovernmental revenues are at 14% of your total general fund actuals for fiscal year '22, of that total revenues of 173 million. Now, if you want to compare that to last year, last year, your property taxes were 56%. Your sales tax was 19%. And your restricted intergovernmental was 16%. Looking specifically at property tax, you can see there was a small increase, 1.6 million, which is about 2%. And when a major changes in your property taxes, your rate did not change. So that increase is due to just a normal economic growth in your taxable base. However, local option sales tax, you can see increased about 6.5 million or 20%. And that is an increase following last year. It also increased significantly. And that's just a factor of the economy and people spending their money locally, not only in this county, but in the state. Because, you know, all the sales tax goes into the state fund and is reallocated back out to the counties. Your restricted intergovernmental actually decreased about 2.6 million or 10%. The biggest reason for that is you had some pandemic funds last year that were in your general fund, the CARES Act money specifically and others that you did not have in fiscal year '22. You did have the ARPA money, but that's not reported in your general fund. So on to your expenditures. You can see where the money goes in the county of your $151.7 million of total expenditures. 30% of that was spent on public safety, 25% on education, 26% on everything else lumped together, 19% on human services. And to compare that to last year, last year, education was 31%. Public safety was 23%. And human services was 19%. So specifically, looking at the education category, education increased less than 1% at $121,000. Public safety increased about 4 million or 12%. There were a lot of factors that went into this increase. Your EMS purchased some new ambulances and other equipment. You had salary increases, both from COLA and merit increases, as well as new positions. There were some vehicle replacement and equipment. And one of the big factors is that, just the cost of fuel to run those vehicles increased. You'll see human services increased about 1.4 million or 5%. And then your debt service decreased by about 940,000 or 9%. That's just due to your debt service payments that have been made and not taking on new debt. That's it for the general fund. I do have a couple of brief slides on your enterprise funds. First, your airport compared to 2021. You can see your unrestricted net position increased to 2.9 million. That is not exactly the same, but is similar to your unassigned fund balance in your general fund. We have negative cash flows from operations, but positive net income of 1.3 million overall. And your quick ratio is six, and that should be a minimum of one. That just compares how much of your current assets to your current liabilities. If you have at least enough current assets to pay your current liabilities, that would be a one. So you have six times more current assets than your current liabilities. The landfill fund also had an increase in its unrestricted net position up to 13 million. Positive cash flows from operation of almost 3.5 million. Positive net income on a GAAP basis of 1.3 million, and the quick ratio in the landfill is 35.7. So one thing the LGC introduced last year was this concept of red flags. They have a whole thing that you go through. It gets submitted with the audit where they, it's like a checklist, and if you have any of these that pop up, it's a red flag. The auditors must present that to the board. You have to respond. This year, there were no such red flags. All of your performance indicators are within acceptable parameters. You do have several positive performance indicators. We talked about your general fund balance available. We talked about your enterprise fund quick ratios. Those are things that the LGC are looking at very closely. You have a stable property tax base evaluation and collection percentage. We have increasing fund balance, but the fund balance available percentage is within, you know, pretty close to what your peers have. That concludes my presentation. My contact information is on this last slide. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
I think you had, I think they're all numbers of our sales tax looked like we had a big increase, but obviously things cost more.
Right.
So you're going to get a higher percentage or a higher gross number. So how can we tell if that's a good number for us or not? Like, do we actually have increases above what just inflation would be?
I'm not sure. Maybe you could compare the inflation rate and back that up.
So eight or 9% inflation, but 20% increase in the sales tax. So of the 20% increase, eight or 9% was inflationary.
Are you seeing that type of an increase in sales tax?
Yes, sir, across all of my clients.
They still increasing 15, 20, 25%?
Yes, sir.
So you're, I guess from what you're saying is that if you're taking the difference between the two and take away 9%, then we've made 91%. What are we saying?
Well, we increased our sales tax by about 20% over 21 fiscal year. So your question specifically is about inflation, and it's what we're all questioning. So if inflation was eight or 9% of the 20% increase, and that would make me think that our actual purchases were 11 to 12% higher. The actual economic activity was was higher by 11 or 12%.
We're taking the 4 million and 9% of that. Have the difference. Well, I don't know. 36 to 32 or something.
Uh, 38 to 32, so 6 million, yeah.
Roughly 10% of that.
Hundred grand. Even. Well.
That's the question.
I think.
Is it going to bottom out? Is it going to reverse?
I mean, one of the slides that you showed was that we've been super conservative because we all continue to expect that the sky is going to fall. Now, we're going to probably take a position this year again that the sky is still going to fall because we are really out of money now from a federal standpoint. The giveaways and all that, that's been pouring into households and local governments and school systems and businesses and all that, unless they're just going to print more. That it, I think the spigots kind of turned off now at the end of the hose. You still get some dribbling out and we'll see some of that, right? But I, I don't, I think we all believe that it's got to come to some kind of of end, but we don't know what the end is. Is the end 5 or 10% or is it backwards? We don't know. No, no. Well, we don't want to argue with you because this seems like a good report. I'm encouraged by the available fund balance. Our peers, you said are at 32% and we're at 42%.
Yes. And that peer group is counties over 100 million.
Ma'am?
That peer group is a county's over 100 million expenditures. So it doesn't pitch you against, you know, the low, lower budget counties, the small guys. They would typically have, you know, higher reserves because they're smaller overall and they need more of a cushion.
Required amount for the fund balances.
That's right.
We've got almost two and a half times required fund balance.
Anything from our staff? Y'all want to add?
I do not. I did send you the full report. I think she's going to have some copies for us soon.
They're in process, yeah.
So, but I did send you the PDF of the full report.
I got to tell you, when we work through budgets and we meet twice a month and we're spending money, obviously, none of us have $190 million budget a year personally. So when we see how Craig does, well, except for Craig. But when we see this money being spent, it makes us a little sick to our stomach. But then when we come together and have these reports and see that the reality is the county is, the county manager and his finance staff have really done a terrific job. So this is kind of a time to celebrate Finance Department and Aaron. Because again, while we see the money going out, it and like tonight, talking about vehicles, you know, seems like a vehicle with 100,000 miles still has some life in it, you know, what are we doing? Well, it comes from the federal government through a grant. Well, we're 30 trillion in debt. I mean, how long can we keep doing this? So, but hats off to Aaron and Anna and what you guys are doing. And thank you for putting us in a great spot. So, and thank you, guys. Anything else for Martin Starnes? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Travel safe, safely, yes. Speaking of money, and we should have asked you guys to leave so you couldn't hear that we're in a great position. We are broke.
I saw them both working the pencils a lot.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, Anna, go ahead.
The next item is to hold the public hearing and to read the resolution for the finding of facts for the debt financing for the Westin Plaza remodel or are we calling it a remodel? Is that what the best term? Yeah. For the, I guess, the filk end of the mall, so. And we have a DW here if we have any questions for them. But I guess I will, I'm not sure what the next step is, Sarah, to have the public hearing is, do you?
Well, Erin, do you, is there anything that you're going to talk about?
Yeah, I was just going to briefly go over the the numbers. You know, keeps, and we're going, y'all are going to be voting again too, so. Seems like you, seems like you'll vote. You're going to vote multiple times, but.
So we're doing this tonight because it's part of the process, right? It's like there's the first date, and there's the second date, then there's the engagement, and there's.
Make it better or worse.
Yeah. Well, I want to say officially, if my wife is watching, it's just gotten better and better and better, honey, so.
This is a step in the LGC process too, for the financing.
So this is just step number whatever, but it's part of the legal process of moving toward. Okay.
Yeah, the, the, this is voting to have a public hearing to go to the LGC to get permission to apply for money, and I don't think there'll be any issues that whatsoever. It's more formality. The big day is going to be Thursday, and that's when the bids come in. So that'll probably, that's why I said, you know, in your analogy, it can get worse or better. In this economy, you know, we don't really know what, what the bids are going to look like yet. But the, the financing is based on approximately 36 million 424,052. Is that what the resolution says? Is that the exact amount?
We're asking the LGC for the 30.1, so that's what's in here.
Yeah, so the, the total, the resolution speaks to 31 something, but the total cost of the project is 36,424,052. Of that, and the reason that that's only asking with 31 some million is because we have 6 million we've saved. But of that approximately.
We've been setting aside, so sorry to interrupt, but so the public knows, we've been setting aside money every year to get to this point.
Yeah, okay. So the, the base bid is estimated to come in at 18.3 million. And then there's six or seven alternates that brings the total construction cost to 31.3 million. And then there's an additional 7.5% contingency that we added. It's 2.2 million 349,000 dollars that gives some buffer in if the bids come in high or if, if something is, you know, there's a big change order or something like that. But that's a little bit higher contingency than you would normally, than I have normally seen with a project this size. Then the design fees are about 1.2, and I'm, I'm doing round when I'm giving these numbers. And then the soft cost is about 1.5, and that includes your furniture, IT, your IT data wiring and stuff like that. So basically, the total estimated cost of the project to do everything is 36,424,000. Now, we're going to find out Thursday if, if that is going to go down or up or be the same, and there's just no way to tell. I believe at the time y'all did the estimating, you did a 15% over what it was at that time. Is that right? Well, sound right. And then we got an additional 7.5%, but still, no, but no, nobody knows what, how, how the bids are going to come in. We'll know Thursday at, at 2 o'clock.
Did, did you have an average number of bidders? Or was it a lower number or larger number than you expected?
Bill, can you step up to the microphone?
As of last Friday, we only had three bidders bidding it. A few dropped out during the holiday. We need three to open bids on Thursday. As you all know, if we don't get three, we'll have to re-advertise and bid it again.
If we don't like the three, can we start over? We don't know the process. No, so, okay.
No.
Yeah, you can. All right.
Call the bids if you choose to.
Okay.
Okay. That's your question?
Yeah, don't, don't go anywhere. We'll probably have others.
So, like I said, the, the, I mean, this is just a, really just a a formality of what we're doing today, but the, the real intent is you've got a public hearing notice and in that has findings and facts. And you know, that's, that's stuff that the bond council has looked over. And, and one of the things it, it says in the findings, the facts is there's sufficient, you know, money to do this. Is that, is that? There will be no increase in taxes to meet the sums to fall due to the proposal. So that's one of the, you know, that's based on the estimate and the information I'm getting ready to give you. You know, that, that is one of the findings, the facts, that if you have somebody speaking public hearing, you know, that we're saying whether or not, you know, if we were doing a 300 or 400 million dollar project, we would have to estimate how much we would have to raise taxes and that type of thing. But that's not the case here. So what, what we have budgeted in, in the budget, and this doesn't mean it's what's spent, it just means what's budgeted, is 400, approximately $420,000 for the old debt for the Westin Plaza. And this is not a part of this, but as Anna and I were talking today, and I think there was a little bit last week, there is an issue or maybe may become an issue that just would make the financing a little bit more difficult. What we currently owe, there is a lien, I believe, based on the, the current debt. We only owe $997,000, 997,425, if we pay that off by February 15th. So, which is aside from this public hearing is something I'd like to ask the board to consider paying that debt off early. And the good news is we have the, the money to do that because the next budgeted line item for debt is for the renovations and outfits of the new ag center. And what we budgeted there was approximately $981,000. And we haven't spent any of that. So that is just enough, well, it's almost 17, $18,000 short of paying off the debt. And so if you will, this is, you know, kind of the way the budget works is we've been, we kind of priced in what the cost of, of this would be, even though it hasn't been spent, it's there. And whether you pay it off or not, the money will still be, you know, rebudgeting. We don't do zero-based budgeting where our budget goes to zero and then we start all over every year. So going into next year, if we pay that debt off, and including, I included the contingency that we have in this year's budget or that we budgeted, which is 183,000. The debt capacity that could be assigned to this is $1,584,500. And that's plus or minus, you know, a couple of thousand or something. It's, it's rounded. So the, the debt, the debt capacity is basically about 1.6 million for this. In other words, the county can afford to spend one point, if the debt service on the construction of this new project is 1.6 million, it will not increase the budget at all for, insofar as paying debt service. Now, you may have maintenance increases and, you know, utility bills and stuff like that. But as, as far as the outfit price, that is already accounted for in the budget. So it's kind of like if you were going to buy a new house and your mortgage payment was going to be $1,500, but you already were setting aside $1,500 every month in a savings account, then you wouldn't have to make any more money to go and buy that.
I mean, every year?
No, 1,500 a month.
Oh.
Yeah, so 1,500 a month. And your mortgage, and you didn't have a mortgage, but you'd been saving 1,500 a month. And you went to buy a house and you bought one for that, you know, that ended up, the mortgage payment was $1,500. You haven't increased your family budget, you know, or your checking account budget. And actually, things are just kind of going along smooth. You're just not saving the $1,500 you would have been saving, which in this case, we weren't saving a portion of it. We were paying debt on the, the debt service for the down payment, I mean, not for the down payment, for the purchase of the Westin Plaza.
And you, excuse me, you were basing all this on a 15-year payout. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, yeah, but I hadn't, I hadn't got there yet. I'm just, I'm basing that, that, I'm using the approximately 1.6 million. It said, we basically have that right now in our budget that can go towards any, any, anything debt service without increasing the budget at all.
Well, I've said we've been preparing for this. I mean, a lot of this credit to Mike. We, we have been ramping up and preparing to spend money on this. So what you're saying is we've been putting that money aside. And now with this 1.584 million dollar payment that it would take, we, we've been preparing for that. We are prepared for that.
Yeah, well, that's not the whole payment. That, that's how much we've got. That we're, we're living within the means of, it's, it's reserved. I guess you could say it's reserved to go to payment. I guess you, you could say it's reserved to go to payment debt capacity.
Right.
When you get to the um, if you get to the, the cost of the project that, that has been estimated is thirty six million, four hundred and twenty four uh thousand. We've saved, and we've been putting back for years um uh different amounts in the budget, and we've saved six million dollars, which would bring the payment down to, is, does, does that say thirty million, four twenty four? Or is that my man? Think their numbers are more.
Million dollars a year in debt service. Senior note.
Mm-hmm, so it's in that.
So I think that's the difference of what we've been setting aside and what the principal interest.
So the amount not to exceed debt in the, the, the uh document you're approving is thirty one million?
Thirty million.
Thirty million, one hundred thousand. So, and, and what I have here is thirty million, four twenty four, but it's not that document. So in other words, we can't, you know, that document limits us to thirty million, one hundred thousand, whatever in debt. But if you take thirty million, four twenty four, the number I have, um, and you um, the debt service payment on that for fifteen years ba- based on a fixed principal payment, which, which means that your payments are, are much more upfront. So it's not like a home mortgage where, you know, like my mortgage is a fixed rate, with the exception of if taxes go up or insurance premiums go up, I'm gonna be paying the same amount for the next fifteen, thirty years, whatever. Um, but the way that thi- this loan is structured, um, the larger payments come up front. So that's, that way we pay less interest. So the max uh payment they had, that's three million, two hundred and fifty thousand? But yeah, it's cl- three, three million, two hundred and forty thousand and fifty four dollars and eighty six cents would be the first year's payment. Um, so like I was saying earlier, we've, we've got reserved, if is the best, that's, or earmarked in our budget going forward, we will have about one million, five hundred and eighty four thousand, five hundred, if we pay that debt off um for the payoff. Uh, if we do that, then what will be needed to make the first year's debt service? Um, and this is an approximate estimate, is about one million, six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars uh to the budget. I mean, not to the budget, but that would be the first year's debt service payment, which is the one point um, six million, six, six, the one million, six hundred and sixty five thousand is about one percent of our entire budget. So it's, it's a relatively um, you know, small amount, uh, you know, when you're looking at a hundred and.
Well, he- here's an easy way to put it, if you take the three zeros off the end. Uh, if your house payment's fifteen hundred and eighty four dollars right now, and uh you guys had kids and you decided, you know, to build or buy a bigger house, and your payment was thirty two hundred and forty dollars a month, then, then um the, the difference um above what you were paying for housing versus what you'll now be paying for housing is sixteen hundred and sixty five dollars.
That's a good example, with one exception, our mortgage payments are much more than one percent of our budget. So that, you know, like in, you know, most of our mortgage payments are, you know, twenty five, thirty, forty, maybe fifty percent of our annual household income. This is only one percent of our annual income. Uh, so it's, it's, it's a large number, but it's very, very small in, in comparison to, to, you know, to what, you know, the amount of dollars the county has, so.
Aaron, let me ask you on this, uh, wanting to retire the debt that's currently on the West End Plaza, what's the percentage rate of that loan?
Good question.
I don't know, but I, it, it's, it's gonna have to be lower than um than what we're projecting this is gonna be, because the rates were lower when we took that.
Man, are we smart to, to pay it off and turn around and borrow it back? I mean, I don't understand that logic.
Well, it's gonna be paid off anyway uh in two thousand twenty five, so we're not paying off.
Well, that's my point, should we just leave it alone and just pay it out and be done? And then that lowers the amount of money we have to take down if we go forward.
On that is that it's already tied up in the collateral. And so we couldn't take out new debt because the building is already tied up as collateral for the first, is that the right term?
Would have to agree to subordinate that old debt, or I think in this case, they're requesting that it be paid off because it's a senior lien to the new thirty million loan.
Yeah, I, I get what you're saying, and I think without that, the move would be, if, let's say it's a million dollars to just, if we have the cash to pay off that loan, then take that million and put toward the new loan to buy down the total debt, finance less money.
Yeah, meal, it, it would be about, I think, half that, because half of that payment comes due anyway in March.
Right.
So we're not real, oh, we're really paying off early.
Yes.
Five hundred thousand.
Well, um, so we owe.
That's the interest.
We, we make semi-annual payments, so we've paid one payment already this year, the next payment's due in March. So of the four twenty, half of it's been paid already.
But if we, if we paid it now, um, it would just make the, the financing for this cleaner. Um, um, but that, that's a, that's, that's um, I guess that, that's not the, the um, that would be helpful in, in this process, but that's secondary to getting the uh um finding of facts approved.
Well, what would the, what would the three of you all, Jay and um Aaron and Anna, what would you recommend then? With regard to the nine hundred and ninety seven thousand? Okay, that.
I, I'm, I'm going to as, I, I'm going to assume that when we bid this, the new lender is going to require us to satisfy that existing debt, that they're not gonna want to subordinate that debt to a thirty million dollar loan. They don't want any money tied up that can affect their position with regard to thirty million dollars. My experience would tell me that the bids would come in, the requirement would be that we pay that off or move it to other property. We could ask that current bank if they want to substitute collateral, and we can put some other collateral up and keep it in place against something else if.
Give them the movie theater.
The, the, the bidding process, Jay's right, as well as the bidding process is competitive, so knowing there's gonna be a clean title versus not could affect, and I don't know, I mean, I don't know this, but I'm just, you know, would think it, it might have some smaller like uh interest rate. Now, the numbers I gave you are based on a rate that, that we think may be a little higher than it's actually gonna be, which is four point two five. And, and it should be a little lower than that based on what the rates are looking like, well, what they look like la- the week before and shaping up to look this week, but.
I just wanted to, this is hopefully not gonna open up old wounds. You know, we've moved past, and I think the majority of the community understands that this is a long play, right? Um, I just wondered if you guys, if, if we had to build new, uh, th- this is, uh, if we had to build new today, we, we've got other departments that are in, as you guys know, in the design phase now as well. So it's not just this, it is things we've been saying uh since we bought this ten years ago uh that we intended to do, and so those things are in the works now as well. So take the health, it's no secret, take the health department, for instance. Um, they're uh bunked up with D S S, and you guys have done a space needs study for health department. Do you recall, I hate to put you on the spot, do you recall what that space needs um square footage was for them?
Yeah, it's a, I think it's like forty four thousand.
Forty four thousand. And I know um, this is a, a tough question, but if we had to build now, new, you know, acquire land and build commercial facility of forty four thousand, I mean, what are we looking at? Two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars?
Four, probably four fifty.
Four fifty a square foot.
Four twenty, four fifty.
Four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So I, you know, I, I'm not, I, I'm not wanting to chastise, I've seen a little bit of chatter about it, right? Why are we, just remember now, folks, we paid three point four million dollars for this building. Three hundred and sixty five thousand square feet, three hundred and thirty thousand, every one of us have a calculator. Uh, three hundred and uh four, uh, three point four million divided by three hundred and thirty five thousand square feet. We purchased that for ten dollars and fourteen cents a square foot.
While you're making that calculation, Mr. Chairman, also what doesn't get talked about very often was the one point two million dollars of, of rent that came in, that was or currently under contract from J C Penney's and Belk's. So our actual cost of this building is two point two million dollars with nineteen acres of land with the cafeteria also, which is not included into three hundred and thirty thousand square feet.
Thanks. So we get questions about, man, what are y'all gonna do with them all? Well, I mean, it's like buying a piece of land when you're young and you have a dream of eventually, I'm gonna build a house and a shop and a barn and all the, but I'm trying to get my act together right now, right? And so you see that this was not planned to be together, this is the time of the year when Martin Starins comes in and talks about our audit. So w- we didn't do this on purpose, it just fell on the same night. You see the work that has been done over the past ten years financially, and the county is in terrific shape financially. And we, we've saved six million dollars cash, we've got sitting in an account, which is twenty percent of this budget for this project, and so we'll be able to uh, to use that uh cash right down on this project. So the, this, i- if, we're, we're gonna have, uh, we've, we've got uh Board of Elections is out there, Veterans is out there. We, we rent out pennies every week. So um, we're moving toward now what the plan was when this was built, we've been getting financially ready for it. So this will certainly breathe life into that side of town, and um, I think it's exciting, so. Like, anything from you? No?
Yeah, I, I will say, I do, I think we should go ahead and pay off, go ahead and pay them all off, because in the day if something happens and we don't do this, we'll, we'll have the complete ownership of that property and we won't have any debt on the books.
All right, well, we're gonna conduct a public hearing now, so uh, tha- thank you for being available. All right, we're gonna open up the floor for um, public hearing and um, if anyone would like to speak about this project, would genuinely love to hear from you. Yes. Well, well, yeah, come up.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there it is, over there, all right. There, opening the public hearing.
This is a wonderful project, and Michael Chapman, three ten K Street, Salisbury, N C, two eight one four six.
Thank you, Michael.
This is a wonderful project, and uh, you know, looking down the road, this will be a great benefit to our community. Question is, is, I know, this is, you've been in this for years, getting us ready. We looked at, we have neighbors down the road who have been on a revitalization uh project for many years too, and that's in Kannapolis. And we spoke with them about the ins and outs and so that we don't fall into the same pitfalls that they may have fallen into. And um, and, and the good things, the bad things was, because they're growing now, but they had some growing pains as they went through this stuff. And of course, COVID was one of their growing pains, which we won't face that we know of. So that's, that's my only question is, uh, have we, have we looked at them and said, hey, we can improve things that they did wrong, and we can learn from their successes also? That's it, thank you.
I think most, most of what they're doing is building new. Yeah. Um, all right, any other comments? Thank you, Michael. All right, then we'll close a public hearing and um we need a motion to approve the findings of fact.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Whoever uh makes the motion um is required to read the entire resolution, or I guess you can ask me to read it, whoever makes it can, can they ask me to read it on their behalf, Jay?
No, you're too slow, you're too, you're too slow.
Okay.
Every word's got three syllables. Uh, what, what is the, where is the resolution? The whole thing?
Yeah, you may repage, no, no.
I think it's just two pages, because the end of this.
Two pages.
All right.
Yeah, the end of the second page is where Sarah will.
There's a big bowl of food out here.
Yeah, beginning with present, chairman. I think where it says ru- resolution authorizing, all right, there, I see it might read. All right, I offer this in the form of a um, of a motion. Um, I, I make a motion to um to agree to a resolution authorizing the filing of, of an application for approval of an installment financing contract authorized by North Carolina General Statutes one six zero A twenty and making certain findings required by North Carolina General Statute one five nine dash one five one. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, uh, the Board of Commissioners of Rowan County, North Carolina, um, here to fore referred to as the county, desires to purchase the financing of the renovation equipping of the West End Mall in the meeting space and offices uh pursuant to an installment financing contract as permitted under North Carolina General Statute one sixty A dash two zero. Whereas it has anticipated the portion of the cost of the project that will be financed together with the payment of the issuance expenses in connection with the financing will not exceed thirty million, one hundred thousand dollars. Whereas the installment financing contract for financing of the project pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one sixty A dash two zero must be approved by the North Carolina Local Government Commission, the L G C, and will only be approved if the findings of North Carolina General Statute one five nine dash one five one B have been made. And whereas the county has today held a public hearing regarding financing of the project through the execution and delivery of the agreement as evidenced by the certificate and summary of public hearing attached here too. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the county as follows. One, after consideration, the Board of Commissioners has determined that the most advantageous manner of financing the project is by an installment financing contract pursuant to section one sixty eight, S two zero of the General Statutes of North Carolina as amended, and support thereof, the board hereby makes the following findings of fact. A, pursuant to section one sixty eight, S two zero, the county is authorized to finance the project by entering it into installment finance contract in deed of trust that creates a security interest in some or all of the property financed to secure repayment of such financing. B, the proposed financing is necessary or expedient because it will provide needed improvements for the county. C, the proposed financing is preferable to a bond issue for the same purpose because of low fixed costs and favorable interest rates offered through installment contract financing compared to a bond issue. D, the cost of the proposed undertaking exceeds the amount of funds that can be prudently raised from currently available appropriations, unappropriated fund balances and non-voted general obligation bonds that could be issued by the county in the fiscal year pursuant to Article five, Section four of the North Carolina Constitution. E, the sums proposed to be provided under the financings are adequate and not excessive for the stated purpose of financing the project. F, the county's debt management procedures and policies are good and have been carried out in strict compliance with law and will here, will henceforth be so carried out. G, there will be no increase in taxes necessary to meet the sums to fall due under the proposed financings. And H, the county is not in default in any of its debt service obligations. Number two, the attorney for the county will render an. Number two, the attorney for the county will render an opinion that proposed financing is authorized by law and is a purpose for which public funds may be ex- expended pursuant to the Constitution and laws of North Carolina. Three, each of the county manager, the finance officer and other appropriate officers of the county is hereby authorized and directed to proceed with the financing of the project and the filing of an application with the L G C for its approval of such financing as described above for the financing of the project in an amount not to exceed thirty million, one hundred thousand dollars. And the actions of any of the chairman, the county manager, the finance officer and any other officers of the county in connection therewith are hereby approved and confirmed. Four, all other acts of the Board of Commissioners and the officers of the county which are in conformity with the purpose and intent of this resolution and in furtherance of the financing of the project are hereby ratified, approved and confirmed. Five, this ru- ru- resolution shall take effect immediately. I make that in the form of a motion.
Thank you.
We have a second discussion. All right, all in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right, um, now, do we want to talk about the debt, the debt, um, retirement?
Yeah, if the board, um, if the board is, is willing to allow staff to pay the debt off early, the amount. You have it. Yeah. The, the, the motion would be to authorize staff to pay off the, the West End Plaza, note with fir- oh, First Bank in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty. Looks is, is it just forty cent?
Okay.
Um, owner before February, what was it, fifteenth, fifteenth?
All right, I make a motion that we authorize staff, uh, to pay off the note, uh, to what bank was that?
First Bank.
First Bank in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents. Owner before February fifteenth. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All right, other discussion? Hey, all in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, thank y'all very much. Thank you, guys. We'll see you soon, I'm sure. Happy New Year.
Thursday.
Thursday, yes. All right, we'll move to item six A. Let's see here, we've got, this is, um, I'm gonna read this as well. This is from Randy Kress. He is the Assistant County Manager and also, uh, the head of our, um, he's also our C I O. And what we're talking about now, the title of this, uh, motion that we'll be making is to, uh, a new in, uh, we'll be putting in place a, a new policy for ban of TikTok and other products from county-owned devices and network. Uh, TikTok is a video sharing mobile application with, with more than ninety-four million users in the United States in two thousand and twenty-two and is owned by a Chinese company, Byte Dance Limited, which has a subsidiary that is partially owned by the Chinese Communist Party. TikTok can harvest large amounts of data from devices it is installed on, including when, where and how the user conducts internet activity. And on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, TikTok admitted in a letter to nine United States senators that China-based employees can access U S data, even though that data is stored in the United States. Additionally, under China's twenty seventeen National Intelligence Law, all Chinese businesses are required to assist China in intelligence work, including data sharing. There are also several Chinese companies that produce telecommunications and audio/video equipment, and the use of these products may enable the manufacturer or vendor to, one, collect sensitive citizen financial or other business data, enable business email compromise and act as a vector for ransomware deployment, conduct effective cyber espionage against government entities, conduct surveillance and tracking of individual users, use algor- algorithmic modifications to conduct disinformation or misinformation campaigns. The Federal Communications Commission maintains a list of communications equipment and services known as the covered list that are deemed to pose an unacceptable risk to the national security of the United States or the security and safety of United States persons. Use of these products would disqualify the counties, the county's use of federal grant fundings in many cases. On descent, on Thursday, December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, the president signed into law H R twenty-six seventeen, called the Consolidated Appropriations Act of two thousand and twenty-three containing division R cited as no, I quote, no TikTok on government devices act that bans the use of TikTok on federal government devices with an exception for law enforcement use. Therefore, the recommendation, uh, to this board, uh, from Randy Kress is uh, hardware, software and services from the following vendors will not be used in or connected to any Rowan County network or installed on any county issued device, including, but not limited to desktop computers, laptops, tablets and mobile phones. And those are who, uh, Hawaii Technologies Company, the Z T E Corporation, Hitera Communications Corporation, Hingzoo, Hick Vision, the Digital Technology Company, Dawa Technology Company, A O Kaspersky Lab, Tencent Holdings, including but not limiting to Tencent Q Q, Q Q Wallet, WeChat, Alibaba products, including but not limited to Alipay, Byte Dance Limited products, including but not limited to TikTok. Following exceptions, following federal guidance, use of software applications will be allowable for official law enforcement use using dedicated county-owned devices, not commingled with county network accounts. And the authorization being asked by, uh, to the Board of Commissioners, allow the county manager to enforce the recommended actions through policy for the effective ban on specific products and services with Chinese Communist Party and Russian Federation ties to best preserve the safety, security and privacy of the citizens of Rowan County. Make that in the form of a motion. All right, any discussion?
A quick question.
Other than me mispronouncing a bunch of names.
Randy, I guess, uh, so if, um, someone were to try to access, say, TikTok through another application, is it gonna bring up a screen that blocks it? Or you're just gonna be alerted to, to that? How, how would that work?
For, excuse me, for the enforcement of this, uh, it would be a blocked page, just like you would do if it was an illegal or, you know, news site or something to that effect. And from a county-owned device, it would be an enforcement that the application can't be installed. Those would be the two enforcement mechanisms we'd look at.
If they're, um, uh, someone sent somebody a TikTok link in their email and they clicked on it, it would just come up blocked?
It would say, yeah, it would say it was a blocked page. Yes, sir.
Are you gonna show if they're already on there and taken off would automatically block it if it's already on the system?
Uh, there's a few different ways and this approach takes both the device and the network. So even if you still have the application loaded or if somebody came in with a personal device, if you connect to any of the county network, whether that's Wi-Fi or connected, it wouldn't allow you to go to the site and make that connection.
Randy, how are you gonna handle, uh, employees that have personal phones? Uh, for example, not pointing any fingers, but Commissioner Klusman asked when she was elected to have the county pay her monthly cell phone bill and use her personal phone. So how are you gonna block her? Since it's a county-paid-for device, how are you gonna block her from not downloading this?
This is only on county-owned devices, so a stipend wouldn't come into play in that particular case. Uh, and it won't have, it will not block if you're on a personal device. Now, if you're on a personal device on county Wi-Fi, um, the guest Wi-Fi, it would actually block that part of it.
Okay.
Yes.
So as long as it's going through the county's Wi-Fi, it'll be blocked?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Randy, we're not the first to do this recently. I think what, um, brought this to our attention, I believe Mecklenburg County just made this similar move.
Yeah, there's Mecklenburg County. There's also, as of mid-December, there were twenty-one states, uh, that had enforced this at the state level. And then, of course, with the December twenty-ninth, that's actually in for federal at this point as well.
All right, so we're.
Department of Defense blocked, uh, banned this for a while. I don't know.
All right, um, so we had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, I think that's, uh, it, isn't it? Ladies and gentlemen, motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.